I call the Tuesday, July 24, 2018, work session of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Sumis?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Dr. Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. The first presentation, Mr. Daniel Jones, Chief Information Officer, will introduce the city's new mass communication platform named Portsmouth Mass Notification System, PMNS, provided through Civic Ready. This platform will engage the citizenry in generalized and emergency communication. The second presentation, Captain Justin Arnold, Deputy Coordinator of Emergency Management in the Office of Emergency Management Services, with responsibilities for the preparation, response, and recovery of all natural or human-made disasters to impact the city. Captain Arnold will present the 2018 hurricane season and the city's preparedness to ensure overall community safety. Following these presentations, Mr. James Wright, Chief Engineer, will give an update on the Union Bank and Trust Pavilion and the Cedar Grove Cemetery Fence Project. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. This evening I will provide a brief presentation regarding the upcoming launch of the city's mass notification platform provided by Civic Ready entitled the Portsmouth Mass Notification System, or P M N S. This presentation this evening will outline the specifics of the notification platform. It will define the notification databases, the differences between a generalized notification and an emergency notification, and our current deployment campaign. The Civic Ready Platform, or the Mass Notification Platform, will provide enhanced communications of generalized and emergency notifications. The platform will enable the city to send up to 7,700 calls per minute, 60,000 texts per minute, or 50,000 emails per minute. The platform has unlimited messaging for users and subscribers. The platform also allows us to geofence or geo-target specific areas where this notification needs to be sent. It also has two-way text and email, as well as an integrated public alert and warning system titled iPulse, which is from FEMA, and it enables us to do interactive polling or interactive voice response, IVR. The two different types of notification databases are generalized notifications, and these notifications are ones that the citizenry will opt-in for, meaning that they would like to receive updates regarding this departmental notification that would be sent out. An emergency notification would be one that is based on the emergency subscriber listing or the ESL that we receive from Verizon E911. Now, please note that the ESL listing only includes landlines. And as that number begins to shrink towards more of a cellphone-based architecture, that we would have to use the other portion of this platform, the iPulse, to send out notifications to cellphone instead of your traditional landlines. So what is a generalized notification? As said, these notifications are opt-in only. And for these types of notifications, the ESL database should not be used based on our contractual agreement with Verizon E911. Types of examples of this notification would be street sweeping, mosquito spraying application, refuge collection alternation, festivals, events, or just generalized maintenance. An emergency notification is a classification, and it should be related to life, health, or safety of our citizenry. These notifications are sent both through the ESL and through the iPulse. The Federal Emergency Management Agency is what created the iPulse, and the iPulse is what makes that blaring sound on your cellphone. The iPulse can also interrupt television broadcast, radio broadcast, emergency alerting. With the IVR polling or via text-to-speech, the city could then send out a notification via IVR that would allow the citizenry to press 1 if they're safe or sheltered, or 2 if they need assistance or evacuated, and then that would give us a geo-targeted location of where to send first responders to. Now, with the weather notifications, we have listed that as an opt-in category. Generalized, that would be an emergency, but also you do get notifications from the weather, and that's the National Weather Service out of Wakefield. One of the main reasons we have left that as opt-in is the amount of messages that gets sent. So, as an emergency basis, we don't want to make that demand that you get every message from Wakefield regardless. If you want to receive weather alerts, that'll be a separate category. Our deployment campaign will be working or collaborating with marketing, communications, and tourism to develop a campaign to achieve the citizenry enrollment through press releases as well as our main website, city website enrollment, where citizenry can sign up to receive these. And we would anticipate a go-live launch date of August of this year, if you have any questions.
Mr. Jones, for people like me who don't have a landline, can we opt-in for those... do we have to opt-in for the emergency stuff and give our cellphone?
No. The emergency side of a cellphone, that will be sent through the iPulse. So if there's an emergency alert, both individuals or citizenry that have landlines as well as cellphones, it'll be sent both directions. So it'll be targeted to all cellphones that are located or pinging from this tower that show within this three blocks or four blocks or whatever it may be.
Can you go to page 3, and the third bullet point from the bottom, two-way text and email? Can you elaborate on that as opposed to what, I guess, we normally would have already?
Okay. This platform, when you would send out an alert with our first responders, they would be able to text and email directly within the platform without going outside to your generic iPhone texting or Office 365. So this allows them a quick link back to where the data is aggregated of what they're responding to.
So would this be something that a user like myself would be using or more on the emergency side?
The system can be deployed via two-way text and email for any application. It would be dependent on what type that we wanted to enroll it as.
What is the two-way aspect of that?
Two-way is we send out a notification, and then either the first responder citizen sends an email or text back.
And what kind of testing was done to make sure, I guess specifically with the iPulse, to say if I'm in, I don't know, Wakefield somewhere or halfway to Emporia, to know if geographical information knows exactly where I am?
Well, the iPulse, it's not specific to your account. When we do an emergency iPulse, it's every cellphone that's connected within that area. So you could be from Florida visiting, staying at the Renaissance, and your phone's blown blared.
Can I go back to the two-way? I'm still... So if I get an emergency message through a text, then the two-way aspect of that is that I can reply back?
Yes.
Okay, so right now, that's not possible?
It's possible in your traditional texting between parties, meaning if you receive a non-emergency or just a generic text, you can text back and forth in that. But under this platform for the emergency side, it integrates directly in, and you just reply back to that message.
Okay.
And it's aggregated.
So as of now, I couldn't reply back to an emergency message?
No.
Okay, okay. I got you.
Yes, one of the things that Mr. Jones shared with me, let's just say in an emergency situation, you know, it's flooding area, whatever, and I find myself in a situation that I really need to get our first responders to know where I am, through this system, I would be able to let them know I'm on the roof at whatever, and then they can get to me. Whereas, right now, we do not have this system. This system is a state-of-the-art, and I would say the top system that cities can use in emergency situations. And Civic Ready powers is the group that is connected with our website, the rebuild of our website three years ago. And does it cost?
I'm sorry.
She asked about the cost. It's in...
The actual cost of the system is right at about $22,000 a year.
Twenty-two thousand?
Twenty-two.
Wow.
See, so we're already a part of the system, we're just unveiling additional things we can do.
He said a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a recurring.
Yeah, I know, I just made sure she heard that.
Sorry.
Other questions? Can you go to page 5? And this is to pick up on Elizabeth's comment. Can a person with a cellphone opt-in for the notification for, let's say, festivals and events?
Yes. The opt-in scenario will have numerous categories. They can opt-in for festivals and events and not for public utilities, or for public utilities and not festivals and events. And they can...
Spray-in or whatever.
Right. And they can discontinue that at any point in time.
And how many other cities like us that have it or coming on the horizon or already have it?
Some of the other cities have a different type of system with similar functionalities. I won't say that it has the complete functionality of what this system will do. And then some cities still rely just basically on the older way of reverse 911, meaning the subscriber list.
In reference to the example about a two-way communication that Dr. Patton said, there's flood and somebody's on a roof, who's going to be monitoring those messages when they come back in? Because it could be a large amount. Who does that and prioritizes those?
Under that type of scenario, where it's a flooding that is sent out, those communications would be sent back to the department that initiated that, as well as users that have access. So I'm assuming under that type of scenario, that would go back to the EOC that's operating that type of emergency, and they'll be able to pinpoint exactly where the issues are.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We will now have Captain Arnold to present us the 2018 hurricane preparedness.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor, City Council, it's my pleasure to give you an update this evening on the 2018 hurricane season and the preparedness that we've done over the last year to ensure our readiness. What you're hearing this quick brief is a 2018 hurricane season overview and forecast that we're looking at having impact to our area, historical perspective of how we've increased our capabilities, what those increased capabilities are, our evacuation strategies that we've implemented, and our enhanced community sheltering that we've undertaken in the last calendar year. As you can see, this, from the National Hurricane Center, they're predicting 10 to 16 large storms. That can be anywhere from a tropical depression to a full hurricane of any strength. They're predicting five to nine hurricanes, one to four of those being major. Something to note this year, we do have a rather warm water temperature that's happening that's beyond normal. So any tropical moisture that does come off the coast of Africa or does build up in the Gulf of Mexico does have the potential to be a rather large storm than normal. I think we're tracking 15 to 20 degrees above normal for this time of year. So an example of that would be, a few weeks ago, if you remember, a tropical storm came off the coast of North Carolina as just a normal low-pressure system with a moderate amount of moisture, and it actually turned into its own small hurricane. So that's the issues that we're dealing with that are a little different than normal. So in that aspect, not a lot of storms, but a potential for some significant-sized storms. Some historical perspective, I went back and looked at information on what impacted us the most. I know Hurricane Matthew brought us a federal declaration, brought flooding to the area that we hadn't seen in some time. But instead of looking and kind of getting tunnel vision on that one particular storm, kind of broadened the scope and looked at previous storms. Was there a link to the damage that we occurred? Where were our shortfalls at whenever it came to responding to the overall citizen during the emergency and the recovery efforts therein? So you can see some of the last four major storms that had the greatest economical impact for us. Go back to 1999 of Hurricane Floyd, heavy flooding from 10 inches of rain; Hurricane Isabel in 2003, heavy flooding with some moderate wind damage; Hurricane Irene, again 10 inches of rain, heavy flooding; and then Hurricane Matthew, 10 to 15 inches of rain in a very short amount of time. Something else to note, too, these are the radar Doppler images of the moisture that were contained in those storms. Floyd at the top, Irene in the middle, and Hurricane Matthew here below. If you notice, the moisture of these storms, everything was concentrated to the north and west corner of this. So as these storms come up the coast and we're able to identify that picture, we can see kind of how they're going to, I guess, react to the area. Those are the ones that bring us the most impactful flooding. If that moisture stays to the south and to the east, we're looking at more of a windfield type of damage. But again, looking back historically of what our major issues are with these types of storms, it's the flooding and this type of pattern. So looking at that, we identified some changes we needed to make in emergency management to increase our capabilities. One of those was recurring training. The EOC has not stood up a lot. It's made up of departments that kind of shunt their staff into those emergency settings. But when we do collaborate and we come together, we need to be prepared. So we've had some EOC-specific roles and responsibility training as it comes to disaster preparedness, logistical roles, finance roles, and overall incident command. We've integrated the Incident Command Series at the basic level to all of our departments to make sure that at least those representing the incident management team have those basic concepts down. And we've participated numerous times annually now in our Virginia statewide exercises that really builds our partnerships with Virginia Department of Emergency Management and our other entities like the National Guard, our DoD partners at the shipyard, and our other military installations, and their entities like that. We've also increased our flood response program. I have a next slide that'll highlight those in pictures, but we've acquired high-water vehicles. We've got flood boats, motors, trailers, personal protective equipment that not only protects the personnel from drowning or any type of issues, but also keeps them clear of the contaminated water, their dry suits. So we're not putting our rescue personnel in type of those contaminated situations. We've also implemented a damage assessment software called Crisis Track. If you're familiar with the damage assessments of older times, it's basically pencil and paper. You go around with an Excel spreadsheet, you track down each individual property. It's a very time-consuming process, and it lengthens that disaster recovery from a couple weeks to almost a month, when you really have to zero in those dollars. This software links directly to FEMA and the Department of Emergency Management and gives you a real-time, up-to-date, as you click it on your smartphone or your tablet, the damage that's being incurred. So now we're looking at hours instead of weeks. This is very beneficial to us, getting those costs back and getting our citizens back on their feet to recovery. We're also looking at cutting the cord, if you will, for our brick-and-mortar EOC operations. Our EOC now is right here at 307 County Street. It's in the Zone A. As far as flood response, anytime the tide or waters rise, we have that possibility of having to relocate. It's a lot of equipment and a lot of capabilities that we maintain in that brick-and-mortar setup. So we're using MiFi, we're using web-based products that allows us to remove ourselves from those dangerous situations, but keep that same Incident Command responsibility. Some examples of our increased flooding response capabilities, the top two vehicles here were we were given free from a militarized or military program, where they were taking retired vehicles and giving them to localities. So we got them at zero cost. We then upgraded them with state grant money with their emergency lighting and paints to demilitarize them, to make them more kind of user-friendly. We've got gantry cranes on the back to assist the elderly or sick patients get in and out of the vehicles. We also have the PPE that you see in the middle that are full dry suits with ropes and helmets and lights to keep our first responders safe, to allow them to get into these flood-prone areas. And we have our flood response boats here you see on the bottom. They're 15-foot inflatables, they're ready to go at a moment's notice, but that also boosts our capability and our partnerships in the region. So if any of our neighboring partner cities or our DoD partners need them, we can respond there as quickly as possible. Last year, we also finished the evacuation strategy called Know Your Zone. This was a collaborative project with all the local emergency managers as well as VDM, to come up with a system that was faster and more systematic to get the most people out of harm's way at a faster amount of time. You can see here, it's very simple to follow. The website had some issues at first, but now it's pretty simple to go type in your address, find your zone, and know your evacuating strategy as an individual citizen. And that in direct correlation to our evacuation routes, what you'll see in red here is our main interstate feeds and High Street. Green is our secondaries, and in yellow is Portsmouth Boulevard and some of our tertiary roads to keep everything moving as best we can. Little information that's come out this week that I wasn't able to point on, I just learned today, was these evacuation strategies come with some data points. They call them clearance times. So they're looking at the greatest amount of people they can get out of these zones and a certain amount of hours. So the clearance time of 80% of our area, 80% from Zone A, was 18 hours. So that's a benchmark. So it would take us at least 18 hours to get Zone A completely evacuated and out of the way for Zone B, right? If we had a large enough event where we're moving Zone D out of the way, you're looking at 80-plus to almost 96 hours. So this is something where if we're going to make a decision, we can't wait to the last minute. We're going to have to be on the same page with our regional partners to make sure we're not causing a bigger mess than we're trying to prevent. And then lastly, we've really boosted our community sheltering goals and initiatives. Through Matthew, we noticed that some of our greatest sheltering assets are in our most low-lying areas. So IC Norcom is our crown jewel when it comes to sheltering. It's got the best emergency generating, it's got the biggest spaces, room for activities, you name it. IC Norcom is where it's at. Unfortunately, it's in Zone A. Not a very good strategy to say, hey, please evacuate your home, but if you want to stay, come back to the school, we're right here in Zone A. So we're looking at these additional facilities to try to move into. So through a partnership with the schools, police, fire, emergency medical, public health, behavioral health, IT, social services, the American Rec Cross, and our friends at Parks and Rec, we sat around the table and we talked about what we needed to do to move our sheltering system forward into the future. We've updated our 2019 emergency operations plan. It reflects the collaborative approach to maximizing our staffing as needed. That way, we're not, at the very last minute, calling people in to man these shelters as well, because it's going to take quite a bit of planning on our end to make sure we have the shelters, one, but two, the staffing to make it work. We've also resorted the three top shelters, which was Churchland Middle, Lakeview Elementary, and IC Norcom for this upcoming hurricane season. And we're also starting to reach out to our religious institutions to see if we can use some of their spaces for possible shelters and overflow. We've also identified critical needs to address future capital and infrastructure improvements, i.e. generating already existing schools and then some new schools that are on the horizon, really implementing some construction methodology to make them most beneficial to us moving forward. And with that, I'll be able to answer any questions you may have.
How about the, I think it was Hurricane Isabel, where the pump station flooded? Are we buttoned down on that? I know a lot of changes were made following that. Is it pretty safe to say that that's out of danger now?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I would say with the work that we're doing right now and the work that took place right after that hurricane, and the filtering system that they are halfway completed, we're in good condition. We're also have the dams that are inspected on an annual basis, so I would say we're in good, very good condition. Now, if something comes, you know, we've never seen, it's no telling what, but we're in good condition.
Yeah, I think it was more the electrical that was the problem.
Yeah, it was...
It was out of the flood zone.
Right, it is now.
Okay, good.
That's what I was just going to say, because it's been actually relocated to higher ground. The old place was abandoned and rebuilt and milled up.
Electrical generation.
Yeah, even our facilities, Dominion's facilities that come into it, has all been relocated and placed up, up on the street where it was, used to come through. Now, everything is up away from the... it was down on the edge of the lake.
Yeah.
Now everything is, you have to walk up a steep incline to get to it.
One of the things we're going to do, Mayor, members of Council, is as a result of this presentation today, we will be going out to civic leagues to present to our public and start the conversation of hurricane preparedness. And so we've already put that in place, and so as a result, they will be scheduled to go and speak to civic leagues.
Further questions? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wright will come forward with an update on the pavilion and the Cedar Grove Cemetery fence.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Start with a brief update of the pavilion. Last week, the team working on the pavilion determined that the pavilion was safe to reopen for concerts. There were concerts Friday through Sunday. The venue will remain an open-air facility for the remainder of this season. We have installed a temporary support brace to provide stability to the main mast. We've also removed the canopy to relieve some of the forces on that mast. The crack that was the major cause of concern has closed significantly, and at this point, there are no additional safety measures recommended for the main mast. But we will continue to observe the structure weekly until our more permanent efforts begin. We've performed an inspection of the main mast up to the very, very top to include connection points and wells. We've determined actually how water was able to get into the main mast. We're currently working with risk management and the city attorney's office on how to proceed with those findings. We're assessing how to move forward to prepare the facility for next season.
I heard that a similar problem with the water within the steel structure happened to Weston, and which brings me, I'd asked the question a few months ago about the, is it an engineering flaw? And if it is, I would think obviously it is, is it past the statute of limitations to have any legal recourse with the engineering company that constructed the pavilion?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we are in discussions with risk management as well as the engineers. We have just gotten the initial information, but I suspect we'll be in a position to discuss that in more detail with you on August 13.
Also, the top, is any work going on with getting proposals on what the next generation cover is going to be?
We have started some of that discussion. We're getting, taking in information in terms of both the request of the operator as well as what the needs would be, so that we can restore the operation as quickly as possible. And we've started that discussion, but we haven't come to a conclusion as of yet.
Do we have a final cost of what everything, what it cost us to...
Do we have a final cost of what everything, what it cost us to do all of the replacements and repairs and assessments and?
Not at this time, as far as if you're projecting out to what the final cost will be. The costs to date are still, as I stated previously, right around $200,000.
And the projected date of having it open with a roof is when?
Our target is the middle of May, no later than the 1st of June of next year.
2019.
All right.
Other questions? No.
Okay, Cedar Grove Cemetery Fence Project is currently under contract. There was a pre-construction meeting held earlier this month. There are 90 days in that contract. The contractor is currently waiting on the delivery of materials, mainly the precast concrete cap for the wall sections and the tubular steel for the wrought iron fencing. Lead time on that material is two to three weeks. So, once that material gets in, he'll be working on site.
Yes, sir.
Was there a final determination as to whether that is actually a city-owned cemetery?
Yes, the city owns the cemetery.
Okay. And there was an association that was part of the cemetery that was mentioned last time? Will those funds be coming through the association, or those are grant or city funds?
No, that was FEMA funds that came to the city. That was, the fence came down doing one of our, was it?
Matthew.
Matthew. And so it's FEMA money that is covering that.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions for the chair?
I have a hundred and eighty question.
Okay, go ahead.
Since we just heard the thing of your fence, would that have been, is that a weather alert? I mean, I get this, too.
That would be too similar for a weather.
Okay. So that's called, that's the weather-type thing you'd have to opt in for?
Yes.
Because we get them from weather and wavy and everybody else who opt in, okay? Just made me think of that.
Somebody had their hand up. Bill? Thank you, Mayor. Had some questions. You know, we've had some new bike lanes, designated areas. Cedar Lane comes to mind, and some people are asking, what's the responsibility of the citizens, the motorists, when they are driving in those areas? Obviously, those lanes are used for motor vehicles as well. Legally or from a law enforcement standpoint, what is that responsibility?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we have a presentation planned on transportation and bike, what did we entitle? And the bike lanes, but our new planning director was on vacation, which had been pre-planned. So in the 13th, we will have that presentation, which shares what the share row, what the laws are now from the General Assembly in regards to what citizens are to do and how they are to segue in the new share rows. And those bicycles that you see on the street, that's a part of that program. Now, we did put something in your report about it to explain what it was.
I was also asked with the new seawall, what the possibility would be to have a designated bike lane on the seawall.
I can answer both if you want.
Yeah, you can answer.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm leaning towards you.
So, our master transportation plan has a bike and pedestrian component to it. When Susan Wilson was here, she was implementing parts of that demonstration project that has just been freshened up in Port Norfolk. Mr. Carl Jackson, who replaces Wilson as the master transportation planner, has picked up before she left off, and you see share roads now. On Cedar Lane, we have the rail-to-trail project that is going to be under construction at the, at the end of this, at the end of this year and hopefully complete it by the first part of next year. What, so there are two types of bike facilities. There are dedicated bike facilities, where it's just for bicycles only, and then there are the share roads, where you see the bikes almost actually on the travel lane with, where the vehicles are. It's basically share the road, there you treat them the same as the vehicles, but they do get some priority. So that's just the long and short version of it. In Mr. Jackson's presentation coming up, I think, next month, he'll get into more and more detail with that. The seawall, back when Ms. Wilson was here, I think she actually came in front of City Council, the seawall is an active transportation way, so you can take your bikes on the seawall. It was decided not to have a dedicated lane for bikes, but to just have it, the ability for people to actually ride their bikes and walk on the seawall, so.
So no need for a designated area?
It's plenty wide enough, I think it's 14-foot wide, so there's plenty of room for everybody.
Okay. So, to summarize what you just said, bicycles will be permitted on the seawall?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And bicycles are permitted on all of our streets, they just have to obey the traffic laws?
Correct.
We're not making any street dedicated just solely to bikes?
Not at this time, no, sir.
And our new transportation planner will give us a briefing?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, sir. Wright?
For safety concern, and I know if you go to Virginia Beach and other boardwalks up and down, they do have designated lanes for bikes, and I would, you know, feel better, and I would think, that's just me, that it should be a bike lane too, because a lot of times, kids, or even folks that just aren't thinking sometimes, can be going too fast, and if there's no.
Share roads.
If they can just go all over the place, they could run into somebody or hit somebody, especially during activities, events, when there's hundreds of folks downtown. That's the prime time when you need a designated area to keep bikes from running into folks.
Are you asking that we give your consensus to ask the city manager to look into that?
That's what, how I feel, I think you should.
Okay. Everybody would agreeable that we ask the city manager to look at the feasibility of putting a line on the seawall?
Seawall. I haven't heard a report, but I'm totally against it.
Okay.
And I think the difference is, is like you're talking about the boardwalk in Virginia Beach, the boardwalk itself does not allow any bicycles. They have a grass area between the boardwalk, and then they have a bike path. That's how that's different. It'd be hard to do it, because we only have the one, one boardwalk.
But you have plenty footage, it's wide. So, and I was only, not to be identical to them, but because they've got lots on them. They've got a whole lane actually for all kinds of extra vehicles, but there's plenty width there for us to have even a maybe four-foot, six-foot, two, and you still have eight-foot, you know, that you could have for pedestrians, but I don't see why you would think that wouldn't work, or I don't see why you don't see that to be a problem when there's going to be big crowds.
I think it's a good safety measure doing those crowds. I think the majority of us are saying, look into it.
Yes.
Bring us back a report.
We'll report back.
Then we'll decide.
All right. Okay.
Is there something else?
No, this is the last presentation. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
All right. City manager's report?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, you have 11 items on the city manager's report, and I will go through them this evening. You have an ordinance, the FY 2019 Community Corrections and Pretrial Service Program, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $557,246 from the Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pretrial services in the city of Portsmouth. You have a precinct location change, precinct number 22. Adoption of an ordinance to amend section 10-105 of chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, 2006, as amended to change the voting location for precinct number 22 from Forward Church to St. Mark's Deliverance Center located on 3801 Turnpike Road.
Dr. Patton?
Yes.
And this comes to us as a recommendation from the electoral board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And it also shares with us the number of parking, additional parking spaces. They have 1,939 people who use that as their precinct, okay? The next is FY 19 Creative Communities Partnership Grant, adoption of an ordinance accepting Creative Communities Partnership Grant in the amount of $4,500 from the Virginia Commission of the Arts, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Museums. The next is the code amendment for parades and public assemblies, and its adoption of an ordinance to amend and reordain chapter 22 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, 2006, by amending section 22-12 and adding a new section, 22-12.1, for the purpose of establishing regulations for parades and public assemblies.
Okay, let's pause for a second. We've had numerous briefings on this. The most recent was by the city attorney. Do you have any questions to the city attorney on this matter? Thank you.
All right. The next is the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG 2017, adoption of an ordinance accepting a Byrne Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $79,830 from the United States Department of Justice, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department. And this, these funds will be used not only to help support the Athlete League Youth Program, but it also will be used for equipment upgrades and camera system upgrades for expansion and drug court treatment program. The next is the tax relief reimbursement, adoption of an ordinance authorizing real estate tax overpayment funded to Dorothy S. Hudson. The next is the Frederick Boulevard, Airline Boulevard, pedestrian improvements, adoption of an ordinance to establish a new project in the FY 2019 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program titled Frederick slash Airline Pedestrian Improvements, accept certain bicycle and pedestrian safety program funding approved by the Virginia Department of Transportation for the said project.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, sir.
Go back to 289 when you get a chance to.
289, all right.
Did we cover that one? I don't think we did.
Oh, I missed that one. I turned two, I'm sorry. Okay. FY 2019 Additional Allocation Medicare Expansion Funding, adoption of an ordinance accepting additional funding in the amount of $299,155 from the Virginia Department of Social Services, and adopting said amount in the FY 2019 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to address the increased volume of Medicaid application anticipated as a result of the Medicaid expect, expansion program.
And you can handle that anticipated increased volume in-house?
Yes. This funding that is coming, and the $299,000, it says that it could be considered for hiring staff or procuring office space and/or furniture, if in fact you are a department that needs that to use the money. As I said this week, in working with Mrs. Littlehill, right now, they believe, and with the staff that they have, they can cover, because this money is actually a pilot, because this is not money that the state is designated, you're going to get $299,000 again next year for this. So it's a pilot to see how, over the course of the year, starting January 1, departments will be able to provide services for the increase. Okay. So I did this one, the pedestrian, and now I'll go to 18-291, Paradise Creek Bridge Replacement Project, adoption of an ordinance to accept certain revenue sharing, state of good repair, and specialized state and federal bond funding approved by the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Paradise Creek Victory Boulevard Bridge Project, and to amend the FY 2019 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program accordingly. The next is the Economic Development Access Road Project for the former BASF site, adoption of a resolution authorizing and supporting submission of an application for participation in the Virginia Department of Transportation Economic Development Access Program. The former BASF site in West Norfolk is a prime industrial development site identified by Economic Development Department, and it is actually 44-acre. The next is adoption of a motion to accept a donation from Spikes K-9 to supply the Portsmouth Police Department K-9 unit with a training bite suit.
Madam Clerk, when we get to that point, we just need a motion to accept the donation.
Yes, sir.
And Madam Clerk, can you brief us on who's going to be sitting in your chair?
Sure.
And why?
Kia Waters, who is the senior deputy city clerk, will be training this evening, and she will be sitting in my seat. I will be in the audience, but she'll be training this evening.
We have three unfinished.
The report backs.
While we're on the agenda, let's cover that real quick.
Okay.
Before we get to you.
Okay.
We have three unfinished business, each are on their second read. The third item was tabled, so we'll need a motion to remove it from the table, and then we'll consider it. Okay? All righty.
All right, Mayor, members of.
Question about, I mean, everybody might know, but on the one with the refund to Ms. Dorothy Hudson, I mean, is it because it was an amount over, I mean, why is this?
Mistake?
In accordance with city ordinance, if the refund is above $1,000, it requires council's approval. I understand the last time this happened may have been January of 2015, and so it happens on occasion, but I don't think it's often that it ends up being an amount that comes to council. I've talked to Dr. Patton. In my prior experience, typically you would have that approval through three different departments. The city attorney's office would sign off to it, the treasurer's office, and whatever other department may be involved, and it doesn't necessarily have to come to council. If that's councils, we'll certainly put forth.
But this one was an error on our part?
It was.
Okay. All right, Dr. Patton?
Yes. Do you have a hand?
On the unfinished business, 18-263A, there were some questions about the impact of the trucks. Are there any report backs prior to deliberation on that item?
Is this one of the items?
On the food trucks?
No, I don't have an update on that, Mr. Moody, at this.
Well, some of those, as I recall, were the length of the trucks, the time that they could be parked, which would be taking up parking spaces, obviously.
Food truck.
And there may have been a few more relative to the food tax, I mean, the parking and the size of the vehicles, or the concern from some of the restaurateurs.
In looking at the report backs, Mr. Moody, and we reported the 24th and 25th, it is not included in the 9th or the 10th. It would just have to have been an oversight. We can pull that and get that information to you, but it is on the agenda tonight.
Yeah. And I guess the third thing was, can non-breweries take advantage of a food truck being parked in front of your place as well? That's the brick-and-mortar establishments.
Okay.
So these are questions that have come up. I don't remember the public hearing, I think nobody spoke.
I'm looking, looking.
We were asking the city manager to bring back the answers.
Yes.
Do you want to consider a motion to table this to the next meeting?
I think so, if you haven't covered it.
I think until those questions are addressed, I think it'd be a good idea. All right. All right. If the motion is made, we can't debate it, so let's...
Yeah.
Okay. So...
We will go back and look at and get the, the questions, the exact questions.
Be a motion to table. They give you time to answer the questions that have been raised.
Right.
And you want to summarize those questions again? The length of the truck?
Yes. Length of the trucks, the, uh, the time in which they can remain parked, uh, on the street.
Okay.
And whether the ordinance will also include the brick and mortar establishments.
We have the questions. In fact, Mr. Moody, Mr. Ashley just showed me. Uh, you sent it to me on July 12, not complete oversight, and you have your three, the three questions here.
Okay. Okay, good.
I don't understand the brick and mortar question. What, what does that mean?
Well, it, it, it goes back to the, I guess the crucial part is, how long can a, a food truck, uh, be parked? Is it, uh, perpetuity as long as the brewery is operating? Um, the length, the, the length of the truck, uh, you know, trucks come from box trucks to trailer trucks.
We have sent it to Baldwin now.
And, uh, will a restaurateur be able to take advantage of the same thing? In other words, if you got a, if you got a restaurant that normally closes at, uh, uh, 10 o'clock, uh, can they put a food truck out there and, and sell food to whenever?
Interesting. Nate?
Yeah, the only comment I was gonna make was where it says here in the ordinance, it's got there in parentheses, it says food trucks on private property. And I know that's how, you know, it's done at MOMAC in Churchland, because that's all private property, and they have basically pedestals designed similar to what you would see at a marina to provide electricity and water to these trucks. So I guess that's something we need to know. Are we talking, like Bill's saying, are we talking about a public street with a parking? Or if it is private property, then that's a whole different situation.
Yeah, MOMAC's, uh, Nathan is a good example. They have the accommodation for including the auxiliary power and the, and the parking spot, which is on private property. But I, I think we just need to be prepared to answer those questions as they've come up.
Any further discussion? All right, let's go to your next item.
All right, um, the action items from July 9th, um, VDOC signs. The request was staff provide cost of annual maintenance for supplemental guide signs. There is an annual maintenance cost on the supplemental guide signs. Uh, it is $250 for each sign that is less than 12, uh, square feet and 750 for each sign larger than 12 square feet. However, um, government or nonprofits do not have to pay the annual maintenance fees. The next request under the VDOC signs was city manager to bring back final proposal estimate to move forward with supplemental guide signs. The city will have to apply to the Virginia logos, uh, for each location that we'd like to supplement guide sign for Portsmouth Historic District at the cost of approximately 1,250 to 1,500. Upon middle and after investigation, Virginia logos will provide the city with a revised estimate for the cost of completing the implementation. So at this time, I do not have and will not have a figure until the application is let where we want the sign, and then Virginia logos between the range of that amount will let us know what the sign will cost.
Listen.
Can, can you refresh me, Dr. Patton, uh, because that was a great presentation. I know we talked about Old Town Historic District. Because we already, there is already the brown signs up for what used to say in Telo's Pavilion. Will they be replaced with Harbor Center, or are we doing Old Town Historic District, Union Bank and Trust Pavilion on one sign? Did, did we decide? I just...
I, I, there was a discussion, and my memory says that they would be on one sign. There would not be two separate signs.
I mean, that makes sense to me.
Yes.
Especially if, even if you're coming from Norfolk.
That's right.
Because, I mean, we've got signs for Scope over here.
That's right.
So it would be one sign.
Bill?
That was gonna be my question. Are we making accommodations for the, uh, amphitheater?
Yes.
Yeah. Only question with that was, I know we had mentioned about putting more than one thing on the sign, and that was one of the things we'd mentioned as far as Crawford Gateway along with the Old Town. But with the, uh, Union, you know, Bank being the sponsor here, do we know how long they're gonna be the sponsor there? And would it be cost effective to put them on the same sign that might have to change at some point?
Next time you report back on this, can you do it in writing?
Yes.
Advance the meeting so we can digest it.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Um, you want me to go on with the rest?
Please.
We finished the, oh, no. Um, staff provide an additional automated external defibrillator, um, at the Sportsplex. The next day, this took place on the 9th, the 10th, the defibrillator was installed at the Sportsplex. Uh, on the Tuesday, July 10th meeting, Historic Preservation Commission, HPC appeals, um, there were, um, several items or list of items that you provided, and the planning department is researching and reviewing the requests with a report back coming August 14. Uh, the next is Medicaid program update, a request, what is the number of residents that could be affected if the Affordable Care Act was repealed? Uh, there are 30,848 Portsmouth citizens on the Medicaid, uh, which equates about 39.6% of our population.
What's that number again?
It's in your report back. It's, uh, 30,848.
Says 39% of the population.
Right. Um, the next request, if proof of citizenship required to qualify for Medicaid expansion benefits, yes. Since 2006, July 1 of 2006, federal law has required the Department of Social Services to obtain proof of citizenship before granting initial eligibility for Medicaid and to, um, use for redetermining eligibility.
Yeah. On the Sportsplex, when we had the ribbon cutting, uh, citizen who was there asked me, they thought the hours should open earlier because a lot of people like to do a workout before they go to work.
Mm-hmm.
It sounded like a reasonable question. Uh, I understand it opens, uh, at 11 o'clock, and, uh, they were wondering if we could adjust those hours where it would open earlier.
We can look into that if you saw design.
All right.
That concludes my report backs.
Any other items? Yes, sir.
I would like to go back to the issue that the city attorney, uh, raised in regards to, um, item 18-288, uh, as far as council authorizing or passing ordinances to authorize real estate overpayment refunds. If, if there's no objection from council, it would seem that would be a function that should be handled with, between the city attorney, city treasurer. That doesn't seem like that should be an issue that should come before council. Um, and if there's no objection, if you could come back, he sounded like he was suggesting some steps that could be taken so that it doesn't have to come before council.
All right. Everybody in agreement that we ask that they come up with a, an alternate plan with the appropriate checks? Okay.
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, completely new topic. Um, this past April, a citizen lady who lives on London Street in Old Town, who, I don't know, contacted me about, um, her property is a two-story property. It's residential on the top floor, and for many years, her husband had a, uh, law practice on the ground floor. Um, they've recently been approached, uh, by someone who would like to put a real estate office in the ground floor as opposed to the law office that used to be there for years and years and years. Um, it's that part of London Street, um, in the 300 or 400 block where you've got a couple of, um, a lot of professional services along there. There's a surveyor, there's a couple of lawyers, that sort of thing.
Damn it, I don't even have...
Um, so I went to, um, the city attorney and asked, um, it didn't make any sense to me that you couldn't have professional services like real estate or travel agent or whatever, and it literally isn't our code, that, that it's not permitted. Um, and this is, uh, it's under the use type, it's called offices and sales, including real estate. So my question to you is, I would like to, if you, if you agree with me that this day and time, it doesn't make a lot of sense to not allow a real estate office any different than a law office, um, I would like to, for us to consider referring this matter to the planning commission to bring back an, uh, if, if they recommended an ordinance for change.
I think I know where this office is. Um, it's Donnie Wise's old office, which is located across from the old merchants from Farmers Bank.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's in that block.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's across from the, uh, parking garage.
Wouldn't this be something that would be swept up in the review and redo of the zoning ordinance?
It, it is, um, it is a potential, I spoke with Mr. Baldwin earlier, it is a potential for discussion when you all meet with the planning commission, but I don't think that item had raised its head before the issue came before the vice mayor in terms of office aspect, because the, uh, as I understand it, the Old Town Historic District has a number of sub-districts with different rules, and as Mr. Baldwin has said, this use, uh, was not part of the 2010 modification. It's, it's something that's kind of carried out, so it's not, at this point, scheduled to be caught up in any type of revision.
So are you suggesting that we do a patch while we're waiting? Is that what you're suggesting? Elizabeth?
Well, no, it's really not a patch while we're waiting. It is a, it is a change.
Okay.
Um, that I would like for the city attorney to forward through the proper channels to the planning commission for review to come back, to then come back to us.
All right, I think we've got some questions. Dr. Water?
Wouldn't a better procedure, um, instead of bringing an individual citizen's issue before council like that to direct the citizen to go through the city manager, and then the city manager would go through their staff, and then it would be a recommendation coming to council, and that would, wouldn't that be done through the, um, process of rezoning that you're speaking of now? It's, the, the citizen should contact the city manager directly.
Okay, that's, let's, let's hear from, who had their hand up over here? Bill?
Well, my, in this conversation, if you want to continue with that, uh, but I do have a question.
Not on this.
Not on this, but a zoning question.
Okay. All right. So restate what you would like.
I'd like to, the council to refer this to the planning commission to remove the real estate office operation from the definition of prohibited uses in the HLO district in order to update this ordinance to make more sense in 2018.
That would be an amendment to our zoning ordinance, which...
It, it would likely be, the, the planning commission would take it up for amendment to the zoning ordinance, right? They would make the recommendation with staff input and then come back with, uh, any proposed change to the zoning ordinance for that area.
To me, doing it that way allows plenty of opportunity also for citizens to, to be involved at the planning commission level and with us.
And Mayor, if I might, there, there are two opportunities for text amendments. Council could, uh, uh, by right, uh, request that, or you flow it through the commission to get more input into the expertise of the planning commission and the staff. Um, so, understanding where Dr. Whitaker is coming from, it is simply going back to that level that he's referring to in terms of the planning commission weighing in and evaluating that whole process to the extent that it hasn't been part of the, uh, patch or the rework, uh, as it related to the 2010, uh, changes.
All right, so what's your pleasure?
Yeah.
Exactly.
I mean, either way, I mean, because citizens ask us and we give it to you or the mayor or the manager, and however it is done through the planning commission is...
Yeah, I would direct the two.
All right, so we'll get started. We got it.
Bill's got one.
Yeah, uh, on another topic.
So what just happened?
We all agreed to Elizabeth's suggestion.
Okay, all right.
All right.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we got it.
And one of our, a citizen who lives in one of our older neighborhoods, the Oregon Acres section, actually, uh, they ask, uh, it's a new two-story house being constructed, and the setback is entirely different than the, the rest of the houses in that section. And the zoning administrator gave a nice reply saying, basically, times change, setbacks change. But it would seem like to me, you know, we spend a lot of time trying to keep the integrity of the neighborhoods looking nice, then you, you go down a line of houses, then you got one that's completely out of the, the setback. Not only is the size different, but the setback is different. And, uh, we won't answer that tonight, but I, I would like to hear what, what the options are, uh, in that, because I can see for a new neighborhood or a new 2030 houses, but when you're putting a different setback plus a different configuration in, uh, a neighborhood that dates back to the, the 40s, uh, to me, it just doesn't look good.
Picking up on that, our, one of our recent work sessions was joint meeting with the planning commission, which we agreed that we want their input and we'll work together on some very philosophical things, such as, when is a by-right use, uh, all that's necessary? When is a conditional use permit? And these are philosophical discussions that we said, in the presence of the planning committee, commission, we'd like their input. Uh, is it okay with council that we ask the city manager to come up with a, a mechanism for, uh, doing that along with, uh, dates and process, much like we did with the EDA on a work session? We had a Saturday morning work session where we worked through a number of things, it was right, successful, and we declared victory at, at the end of that. But we need, we need that input. I mean, for example, when do you require a conditional use permit, if ever, for multifamily development? I could argue both sides. If it's a by-right use, well, I have a conditional use permit. When do you require a conditional use permit for, let's say, entertainment in a restaurant? And so each one of us have thoughts on this, and you might be conflicted like I am, you could argue both sides. And so we need, we need that input from the planning commission. We said that we would get it. So any disagreement on having, uh, Dr. Patton and, and Debra work out a process and tentative schedule to include dates?
Just, just a question on that. How does that differ from, uh, what we were given, uh, from Mr. Baldwin, the handout that show when a use permit is necessary and when one is not necessary?
Well, that decision is ours.
Well, it was on a, it was a chart he gave that had the different types of categories, and it had use permit, and, uh, I forgot the different lettering, and it indicated when one would be required and when one would not.
There's no difference, but we haven't had a discussion amongst ourselves with the planning commission, whether or not we think that chart is appropriate. And, for example, and I'll use the multifamily, uh, uh, example. If a piece of land is already zoned for multifamily, does it make sense to require conditional use permit if it's already been determined that that's appropriate spot for multifamily? And each one of us have our opinion on that. We need to have a discussion where we sit around the table and, and talk philosophically and see where the consensus is. And the same thing with the planning commission, because this new zoning ordinance is gonna come to us from the planning commission, and there's no need to have them going in one direction and council going in the other. Let's work together from the start on this, on a work session environment, on a day where we don't have to watch the clock and discuss these things.
Yeah, I don't have...
Okay. So the direction is to come up with a process, be thinking about dates.
Right.
We're kind of hitting at maybe a Saturday.
Right. But what we...
If all is busy.
But we're also, um, as it, as we unveil all of the part of the zoning rewrite, there, we're looking at multiple meetings, so it will not, we're not be able to do all of all the rew... So it will not, we're not be able to do all of all the rewrite in one meeting, so we'll...
No, and I just use conditional use permit as an example.
As one little piece, yeah.
Some other philosophical things we need to talk about.
Okay.
Good idea.
This, this meeting would be after we would have finalized our part, and then...
Yes, they are still, the consultants and planning still working on, remember, we had a presentation, but they still are working, so they will come in different components. So as a component is getting ready to come forward, which we'll know, then we'll be scheduling these meetings around it so that Joel can really dev in.
All right. I think we've worked through our agenda. We have a need for a closed session.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, we sure do. We have leave home reports. Let's start with Ray.
This isn't necessarily a leave home report, but it's just a report. If y'all remember, I had asked to get a tour of the Kirby Water Treatment Plant because of some concerns about what happened in the past. And it was very educational and informative and enlightening, and it gave us an inside view of how far we've advanced as a city of why our water is probably not the best in the state of Virginia because of the level of expertise of the staff and the processes that they go through to ensure that the water is contaminant free and that it's clean and pure. And then even the technology is, they're moving. They have a major construction project where they, certain things they can't filter out in the normal process. They're going to use ultraviolet light to, and water falling down to try to get rid of some impurities that the regular process don't. So they're, it just impressed me, and it was something to see all of the different processes of what goes into taking the water out of that lake, taking it to your home, and it's just so impressive. And I would hope that all of you could get to see what they've done out there and what they're doing and what the future holds for them, because they are not only going to, they've started to expand, but they're going to kind of rebuild the place. And they are, I don't know how far they're along, maybe 50, 56% along, but they also, they're, how they monitor the whole facility is all going to be revamped and renovated and brought up to technology. So it's those, those folks that run that, and it's about, what, 25 people that he said that run that place 24/7, it is impressive. It's something that you would, you would be up for a trip to take the tour like Lisa and myself did. And they are trying, but I guess something else came along.
Schedule that time out.
But I've seen it before, and you're right.
It's awesome.
Thank you for that. Bill? Yeah, some of us were out there, I think about a year ago, maybe. It is impressive. You're right. Personal committee will have some prospective appointments to discuss on a closed session. Lisa?
PRHA, the board passed a resolution approving their asset management for the fiscal year for the operating budget. They also received $2,184,000 from HUD, and that's a 42% increase, they said, over last year that will help them to work on the large scale improvements for public housing. And also the mold situation that was at Hamilton Place, they had a consultant, Timothy Mitchell with TAM. They have found a solution, they're working on that, and they have something temporary that they're putting in place until the work is completed. So they are working to complete that mold.
Yes, this past week, Parking Authority, we had a meeting last week, and the major focus of that meeting, we were discussing, and we were going over drafts of potential updates to the bylaws. Not every member was able to be there that night, so we wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to look at the bylaws and make recommendations and have a discussion before they're voted in. But that's, that's the main goal at this time, so hopefully in a meeting next month that can take place. And then, we haven't met this month at Regional Jail, we won't have a meeting until next month, but I don't know if everybody saw, the email today, is some very good news for the Hampton Roads Regional Jail was put out today. Media release says Hampton Roads Regional Jail received a certification from the Virginia Board of Corrections last week, July 18th, as approval for unconditional certification based upon an excellent performance level of 100%. That's very good, and this is all under the watch of the new superintendent, David Hackworth. And as Dr. Patton and myself have said, things have really changed since he became on his interim and he was voted to be the full-time superintendent. And out of this, it says Regional Jail was able to attain this 100% compliance with 114 standards, of which 43 are life, health, and safety standards. So things are going really well at Regional Jail at this time.
I reported that the VML Finance Committee was going to meet last week, which I was asked to chair. Let me give you a report. It's almost scary. Their, the state is predicting that they'll have a surplus of $552 million as they start looking at the budget amendments for 2019. Anyone's guess what the impact of the Wayfair case, that's the Supreme Court case that allows for internet sales tax? But one guess, and it's a guess only, is $300 million for the state. A lot of time was spent on tax reform. Virginia is one of those states that parallels the federal IRS. And it appears that if you, for example, if you take itemized deduction at the federal level, you have to take itemized deduction at the local level. If you take standard deduction at the federal level, then you have to take standard deduction at the state level limit. Because the standard deduction has gone up at the federal level, and the limit, for example, of the amount that you can itemize for deductions for real estate taxes has come down, that there's a belief that more Virginians will take the standard deduction. And the standard deduction on Virginia is only $6,000. And so the thinking is, is that the state's going to have more money coming in in 2019 in income tax because of the migration that Virginians will do from itemized to standard deduction. Now, these are all hypothetical and best guesses, but the message is, until the state, the General Assembly, and they don't meet until 2019, addresses the income tax structure, the state's going to be $552 million surplus, extra money coming in from internet sales and extra money coming in. And the state has had a history that when they face times like that, they cut taxes. And we've got a lot of needs at the local level.
Yes, we do. We do.
So that, that's the report.
That's not good.
All right, let's have the motion go in closed session.
I move to go into closed meeting, according to the D.C. Subsection 3.28711, 8.1 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for and appointees to boards and commissions.
Sarah, second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Now, Clark, would you call the roll?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes, we're in closed session. We have a motion that's been made and signed in to certify. Any discussion? And, of course, would you call, call the roll?
Yes, so Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes. Before we adjourn, Dr. Patton stopped me, she's got the answer to the questions on the food truck and wanted to pass it out, so let's, okay, all right. Dr. Patton?
Yes, we have a question, Mr. Wilson, because oversight on my part, we answered the questions that Mr. Moody sent home to 12.
Take your time, we've got 20 minutes.
The item that you have on your agenda tonight is a zoning amendment, as we indicated, and as such, it only applies to private property, as you said, not public right-of-way, and only applies to micro distilleries since microbreweries are already permitted. Food trucks on public streets are regulated by the Streets and Sidewalks, Chapter 32 of our code, and not zoning. I'm not aware of any maximum number of food trucks listed within the codes, and there is not a number listed there. The city does not have detailed mandated specific size standards for food trucks or for food trailers. Food truck operators must get all required health department, fire department inspections to obtain a food truck permit. They also must receive a business license from the Commission of the Revenue, and they are responsible for paying all required taxes. Food trucks may operate from 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. That is specified in our code. And I trust this answers your questions. This was from Mr. Baldwin. Please let me know if you're providing any additional assistance, and it's Mr. Brian Swetson Planning that is overseeing and has presented.
On number three, does the permission require bond?
Yes, he does.
He typically does. I know there's two scenarios. If it's a one-time event, there's a certain charge, or if it's a regular business, there's a different charge.
Yes.
I thought he did. Especially on mobile operations here today, going tomorrow.
So really, as we sit here tonight, this only applies to copper and oak, right? I mean, that's it. That's all we're talking about.
Well, that one, and the one that's supposed to be where Old Rudy's was, that's going to be one too, I believe. But it's private property, so it's, they're providing a parking space on private property, so.
And where's, where's the private property?
I don't know.
They're going to pull up in the yard.
Well, I don't know where it is. It's copper and oak.
They're going to turn on the patio and let them park on the patio.
That you can get, you can get in the back. Well, I mean, I know there's a courtyard in the middle, but you can't get a food truck in there.
I would think they would want a food truck to be very visible.
This may be an amendment that one can...
And that's, and that's all it is, it's just mirroring what was already in law for the breweries. So, I mean, if they can't meet the requirements, it is...
They can ask their tank.
Is everybody comfortable with the responses that we can consider this tonight?
Yeah, put it back on the table. I didn't catch it, it was just, it was that specific.
All right. That's it. We're adjourned. We'll convene a session.